All right. It is 6:30, and I'm gonna call to order our August 13th, 2019 council meeting to order, and I would like that, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Schinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present. If you will, stand with me for the prayer and pledge. Precious Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all that we have seen, all that you have presented. We ask that you continue to be with us, God our minds, our hearts, and our souls, as we continue to make the decisions for this city and our community as a whole. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Glad to see everyone here tonight, and just listening to the ladies in our earlier work session, just wanna say that, know that this council, for the last fifteen, maybe twenty years, I know have worked extremely hard to make everything great for this community and even better. So I wanna commend them tonight on the work that they've done, the work that they are doing, and will continue to do, and I just want everybody to give them a round of applause, because it takes something to take some punches and keep on going. Okay. You all have received a copy of the July 23rd, 2019 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or any discussion? Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted as official. We have three public hearings to conduct tonight. Each of these three public hearings is to consider amending the land development code to allow special uses in their respective locations. The first public hearing is to consider ordinance 1906-13 to allow a special use of 103 Lake Drive. The second is to consider ordinance 1906-14 to allow a special use at 200 South Liberty Street. And the third and final public hearing is to consider ordinance 1906-15 that would allow special use at 310 West Green Street. The procedure for conducting these hearings to amend the land development code will be as follows. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the land development code. We will then hear a report from the planning and zoning director, including the advisory decision of the planning and zoning commission. Council will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor or of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, but the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name and address for the record. The first public hearing is on ordinance O-1906-13 that would allow special use for the property located at 103 Lake Drive. Has this public hearing been properly correctly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002 known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millersville, Georgia, ordinance grants a special use for a car lot for the property located at 103 Lake Drive.
I will recognize the zoning administrator for a report to include the advisory decision of the planning and zoning commission, Ms. Murphill Graham.
Hi. This property is currently used for a mechanic shop, and what they're wanting to do is sell cars, they're mainly cars that people cannot afford to dig, so people have not paid them for it, and they need to dispose of them. Now, of course, you have to have the zoning letter signed off on in order for them to get a license to sell cars. Our zoning ordinance says all car lots have to be special use, so he's here requesting a special use so he can sell the cars. Oh, it was unanimous, it passed.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant or anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment?
I'm here, Randy Goss.
Take the podium for me, please, sir, thank you.
I'm Randy Goss, I'm one of the owners of Pittman Automotive right now, and the 103 Lake Drive is the property that I'm here to represent. You want my residential address?
Your address.
Okay, it'd be 505 Second Street, Macon, Georgia, 31201.
Thank you.
So, right now, the way the state law reads, you can't sell more than five vehicles in a year without being out of compliance with state regulations, and we would like to be able to have that ability to, I mean, we've already, you know, I hate to title it myself, but we've already crested that for the year, because people just can't afford to pick up some of the cars once they're fixed, and we want to remain compliant, that's really the biggest thing. And there would be probably more than three or four, three to five cars at any time, and they would be on the the West Hancock side of the property, and they would not be adjacent to any other property on that side of the road.
That's all? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Okay.
My name is Bennett Duru, and I reside at 5851 Old Lamb Court, Latonia, Georgia, at the Cap County. The property that is adjacent to his, you know, car lot is my property, it's my house. I lived at that house for almost 25 years before I moved to Atlanta. I still reside in Atlanta, but I come down here, you know, because I have other properties here. Now, I was here a month ago when the decision was supposed to have been made about selling cars or having it as a lot to sell cars. Then, I objected to it, and I asked him, "How many cars do you want to sell there? Why do you want to sell, you know, is it a car lot or what?" He said, "No, what he wants to do is sell one or two cars." And I asked for him to do that, he has to have a license to do it. I said, "Okay, I don't have any question if you are going to sell one or two cars." Now, thirty, thirty days later, here I am with another notice to come in, to, you know, see the elders, and then he has already changed it that he wants to do, have it as a car lot. Now, the issue I have there is, my house is there, and having a car lot there would diminish the, you know, the value of my house. It's a total brick house. The house is already paid for, I pay county tax and city tax on it. I just added a $10,000 roof on the house, and, you know, a couple of months ago, the whole house was rewired, because I'm trying to fix it up. So by him having a car lot adjacent to the house will automatically diminish the cost of my house or the value of my house. Now, I have read this minutes here, I read it. These minutes did not specify or conclude that I agreed for him to have it as a car There is difference between a car lot and, you know, selling one or two cars, because, you know, clients did not come to, you know, claim their cars when they are supposed to have come, or when they were supposed to have, you know, picked it up. So that is why I am objecting to this. Now, I looked at the, I was fortunate enough to look at the, look at the exhibit here with a black mark. I went to the courthouse, and I picked up the actual, you know, plaque. This exhibit does not match the actual plaque. It doesn't match it in any way, in any form. So that is why I'm objecting to it. If he wants to make it a car, you know, you all want to approve it to become a car listing, then I have to, you know, find an alternative, you know, venue to, you know, get it, you know, resolved. But that's the plaque, that's where the actual plaque, it's a residential area. When this building was built, that was, it was built in 2014, he wasn't the original owner. I protested it, but unfortunately, I lived in Atlanta, I couldn't come because of some other circumstances I had. So I allowed it to be built. I talked to Owen, the guy who owned the place, who built it the first time, and he told me, "Say Bennett, I'm going to try to put some cars at the hillside, but I'm going to remove it, you should allow me to do that." I said, "Okay, remember, it should be almost 200 and 300 and something feet from my house." He said, "Yes, you do, you know, recognize that." Now, you know, living in Atlanta all these years, fortunately, I retired in 2016 from Georgia Power as an accountant, so I have to come down here to, you know, look at the properties. Right now, I have a guy over there, sitting over there, that was able to help me maintain some of the properties I have, and I'm thankful, thankful to him, you know, James, you know, thankful to him for having been able to help me do that. I'm trying to fix the house, and if he has a car lot, because really, right now, if you look at it, all the cars he has there, some of them have been there eight months, nine months, you know, packed up at the top of the hill, adjacent to my, to the fence, as close as possible, any of you can go over there and look at it. There's no way I can be able to, you know, sell the house or fix it up and be able to, you know, realize what I'm asking for. So if he wants to have a car lot, I don't, I don't question his, you know, motives or intentions, but there are so many areas in Millersville, so many, you know, vacant, you know, lots in Millersville, he could be able to, you know, do something with those. Having a car lot adjacent to my house is just not appropriate. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Goss, did you wanna come back with another rebuttal again? Okay.
All right. When Mr. Pittman originally applied for zoning for that property, it was the property actually adjoined his property, and the solution that the board, the planning and zoning had come up with was a 10-foot barrier between his property and the proposed automotive garage. And that property is there now, and there is a big barrier of trees between the two properties, you can't even see his house from our place. So that's the first thing. And, you know, he said earlier, I guess when Owen was, Owen was trying to, when Owen originally set the place up, I guess he was gonna sell cars, I never heard that before, and he said he didn't mind one or two, that's really all we're talking about doing there anyway, and we're gonna do it on the other end of the property. It is a currently a full-service automotive garage, and we have, yes, we do have cars, they sit all over the place, some of them sit on the boundaries, and some of those cars are the ones, exactly the ones that we're talking about today, we need to get them gone, they need to be sold. Some of them are county cars, you know, they're, they're salvaged, they just haven't picked them up yet to take them away. We have no other place to store them except up on the hill above us, but we do have a nice rotation going in there, so it's not a static junkyard up there, that's not what you have there. Let's see here. And if we ever decide to sell more cars than what we're talking about here, you know, we're gonna find a larger lot, so we won't turn this into a large car lot, because that's not our primary business. We make our living off of the mechanics. That was it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else here that wants to speak against this amendment? Are there any questions?
Can I say something again?
Yes.
Okay.
From what he has said, you know, that his primary, you know, action, so it's not to sell so many cars, but the cars, you know, that he intends to sell, it's only one or two or three cars. I don't have any issues for him to sell one or two cars, but the issue I have is, all the cars that had been there while I was living in Atlanta, I'm still living in Atlanta, come down here probably once every week, those cars are still there, packed up all the way to the two feet, he said 10 feet, no, it's two feet, buffer, you know, grass buffer, and that two-foot buffer is my land, because the fence is over on my, you know, on my part of the property. So when he says it's 10-foot buffer, no, it's not 10-foot buffer, it's only two-foot buffer, which has some trees grown up, they had intended to cut down all the trees on the fence, I prevented them from doing that, I prevented Owen from doing that, and he knew very well he shouldn't have done that. So why he's saying that it's 10-foot buffer, no, it's not 10-foot buffer. So if any of you just have the time, walk down to the place, you can see how the building was erected because of my, you know, objection in 2004. So it was, you know, at a rectangular, at a rectangular, you know, space, you know, I had to make that space of 200 or 300, you know, space, you know, fit. So whatever you all decide here, it's okay, what I mean, it's okay that he needs to really take homage to it and then do what is right, because I don't want my house to be, you know, diminished in value. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the members of council?
I have a question. I know where the property is, and we're saying it's on Lake Drive and Hancock. Is it right in the curve there where you go past the service station where the cars settle on the, they will be on the right-hand side as you go down?
If you're coming from 441, you go downhill, cross the bridge, it's on the left, you have Lake Drive coming in from the left, and you're on West Hancock. When Mr. Pittman ran the automotive garage, he always used 1421 as the address, which is the old gas station next to it.
Right, okay.
And since we've moved in, the correct address by planning and zoning and the flats and everything is 103 Lake Drive, so we've adopted that address.
Okay.
But yes, that is the one we're talking about, it's a big brown building with red stripes on it.
Right. So where the cars are parked is where we're talking about?
The, there's, what we're talking about putting the cars that would be for sale would be on the West Hancock side of the street of the building, and we had actually applied for a, planning and zoning for us to come in and, and put an extension on, because the parking was not big enough, and that's the reason cars were parked everywhere. So the very front corner of that, on the corner of Lake Drive and West Hancock are where those cars would be parked.
So it would be on the opposite side from, okay.
Now, what, may I address a few things that he said? Okay. When we purchased the place, the zoning had already done all the buffer and everything that's supposed to be there, and that was marked, if, and the trees, the cypress trees and such were planted there by Mr. Pittman, as I understand it, okay? I wasn't there for the planting, so it's, I don't know for certain, but if there's any encroachment from any of those cars, I'll go back and check it, and I'll move them back from that 10-foot, I don't think there is though, because where the stakes were placed, we try to respect that.
So when you said that brown building, the one that's facing the gas station?
This is 45-degree angle, ma'am.
Right, so you, it's directly behind there is where you're putting the cars?
No, ma'am, on the, the building sits at a 45-degree angle facing the corner, and where we'll put the cars on the to sell, on the West Hancock roadside. And right now, any of the vehicles that, because the space is limited there, I mean, I wish he had had another acre to go with it when he built the place, but he didn't. So we work with what we've got, up on the top of the hill, as we call it, which is between his property and ours, that's where vehicles that haven't been approved for repairs yet go, that's where, you know, if there's vehicles that are abandoned or, or that need to go in for salvage, that's where they go. And we, anytime there's a tow truck that brings a car to us, a lot of times that's where they'll end up, is in the driveway up there, so.
I'm just trying to visualize it, I pass it every day, and I see the vehicles out front of the brown building, no, okay.
So you said that, that there are trees there for a buffer or grass, which one is it? I heard grass and I heard trees.
It's trees.
So.
And there's trees, and it's, because we don't really maintain those trees, there's more like a, so there's some scrub brush that grow in there too, but we do keep the lawn cut as best you can around the, you know, cars up there, but we're not on his property.
So you're still gonna put cars back up on top of that hill on that side where his house is?
Not the cars that we're selling. And that's, that was the, the issue, that we're, we're using the, the land as it's been approved, and we're not outside of any of the scope of our business there, so any cars that we have, we use the real estate that we have to park them. The cars that we want to sell, they'll be parked on the West Hancock side of the street on the, the concrete pavement outside of our building.
Really, that, that location is like when you first drive up, but it's going towards the next road.
I rode through there after I saw it on my agenda. Anybody else have any questions?
Ms. Murphill, if I could, there's nothing in this rezoning application that limits the number of vehicles that can be sold on this lot, is, am I to understand that this would be a blanket authorization?
Yes, you are correct, but when you make a motion, you can limit the use if the council chooses.
Mr. Goss, at any given time, what would you say would be the maximum number of vehicles that you would have for sale in that space?
Usually when, my son, my son's the general manager there, when we've been talking, we said three to five, but we can say three of four, you know, we don't wanna...
How many spaces do you have there?
Parking spots.
Parking spots for vehicles to be sold at a maximum?
Well, right now, we haven't really designated the spots to it, but on that, that West Hancock side of the street, we have several, it could probably handle 10 vehicles over there right now, because we have gotten rid of a lot of vehicles that had been abandoned that we inherited with the business, so now our parking is not quite as bad as it used to be, so that's, where we're talking about parking the cars is where we normally put the cars that have been parked, that are ready for pickup.
So how we word the limitations, that's what I, because I, you know, and my reason for saying that is because we had, we had a situation where we did a special use for a parking lot, and when they came here, they said six cars, and there's probably 20 or more on that lot now, so, you know, if we, if we're gonna do it, we need to word it in the, in the document as part of the approval process, so that, you know, we, we won't, because once you, if you approve the special use, then there's no limitations, if you approve it as it's stated. So we need to know, if you're going to, if you're going to approve it with limitations, then those limitations need to be stated tonight, right, Mr. George?
That's correct. The zoning ordinance allows you to put conditions on any approval that you would choose to do, so it basically would require a motion to approve the special use with a limitation of five cars, six cars, whatever, at any one time.
I have no problem with that.
You wouldn't have a problem with us having five cars?
No, ma'am. If we're gonna, if we grow, you know, we'll go.
That's your pleasure, mayor.
Mr. George, can you?
Well, we have to cut off the discussion, this is actually the time for council to be discussing, actually.
Okay, so, yeah, sorry. Okay, well, this concludes the presentation of the evidence in this matter. Members of council, you have heard the ordinance and the evidence presented. Can I get a motion to approve for the special use with the conditions of limitations? How many vehicles that will be parked at any given time?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the findings of the planning and zoning board and approve the request to rezone with the condition that the number of vehicles for sale at any given time be limited to five.
I'd second that.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Motion is approved, there's no further discussion on the proposed amendment to the land development code. The second, the second public hearing is to consider ordinance O-1906-14 that would allow special use of property located at 200 South Liberty Street. Has this public hearing been correctly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
Please read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002 known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millersville, Georgia, ordinance grants a special use for 12 residences for the property located at 200 South Liberty Street.
I will recognize the zoning administrator for a report to include the advisory decision of the planning and zoning commission.
This property was granted the overlay to request the special use back on October 24th of 2017, now the applicant is coming forward to request the special use. Here's liking 12 residents to reside in this home, and at the planning and zoning meeting, this request was denied by two to three vote.
Is the applicant or anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Donnie Olznum with Friar and Olznum, PC, on behalf of Mr. Sims. I reside in Jones County, but my office address here in Millersville's 110 South Jefferson Street.
Go ahead, your question.
Mr. Sims has requested the group use overlay for the house at 200 South Liberty Street. This is not the first time Mr. Sims has requested group use here in Millersville. This is not the first time Mr. Sims has requested, um, group use here in Milledgeville. Uh, but this specific property, uh, was built in eighteen ninety-eight. It is a very, very large home. Uh, as many of you may recall, previously, it was, uh, being used as a fraternity home, um, fraternity house before Mr. Sims bought it. Uh, Mr. Sims purchased the home. He ultimately evicted, um, the fraternity that was there, because he did not, uh, he, while he intended to apply for group use, uh, from the inception of his purchase of this property, he wanted to do it the right way. He wanted to come before council. We did that back in two thousand and seventeen, requested the overlay. As you may recall, there was a moratorium for a period of time, so that's somewhat been some of the delay. And we're back here today, uh, requesting that, um, the, the group use be granted. Um, again, this is a very, very large home. Historically, it has had a lot of people living in it, uh, in particular when it was used as a fraternity house. The restoration and upkeep of homes like this, uh, is very expensive. I can attest to my office at one-ten South Jefferson Street, uh, we have been recently undergoing replacing the windows in that office. Just the replacement of the windows in my office at South ten Jeff, uh, one-ten South Jefferson Street was in excess of ninety thousand dollars. The renovation of these homes that are historic in nature is very, very expensive. This home here, again, is over a hundred and twenty years old, and it's been here in Milledgeville for a hundred and twenty years. The problem with these homes that are, that are so old is that, um, they are so expensive to, to maintain, so expensive to repair, that they're not often used, uh, any longer as single-family residences. Here in Milledgeville, we are losing our old homes. Some of them, uh, like this house here, uh, was torn down by GMC and made into a parking lot. This house here was also torn down recently by Georgia College, uh, and presumably they're going to use it for parking. The colleges determined that those homes that they owned were not feasible to restore them and use them, and they tore them down and repurposed them. Additionally, uh, sometimes it's, it's just a matter of the homes get into a condition that it's just so expensive that they can't be repaired. While this is not a home, y-you can see what happens here in Milledgeville sometimes, and in, in any other town, when historic old buildings are not maintained. If you don't maintain them, they end up having something like this happen where the roof collapses. Or when they're not maintained in, in the manner that, uh, we are proposing for group use, sometimes a hundred-year-old homes have faulty wiring, uh, and they end up, we end up losing those homes to, um, tragedies like the fire that happened, uh, last year. Mr. Sims has a, a stellar record of investing millions of dollars in the city of Milledgeville, restoring our historic properties. His own personal house, he restored at three-thirty West Green Street. He's restored, uh, the property at two oh one North Columbia Street, two-eleven South Wilkinson Street, one-twenty North Clark Street, three-twenty-one and three-eleven South Liberty Street. Millions of dollars have been invested in these homes. The, all of those homes, now, not all of them were in excess of a hundred years on that list, but many of them were. He has recently, um, completed, uh, the home at two-forty West Washington Street, um, which is right around the corner from, uh, this house, uh, on Liberty Street. That house was built in eighteen hundreds, uh, and it is still here, and it looks great now, and hopefully it is gonna be here another two hundred years. But I can promise council this, if there aren't people willing to invest the millions of dollars it takes into these historic homes, two hundred years from now, we won't have them here in Milledgeville. Mr. Sims is hands-on, responsive management. He, the, the houses he's got, he has tenants in them, um, and he's here. He makes sure that they are not parking on the streets. He provides adequate parking for them. Um, this, this is some of the examples of, of the houses that he has restored here in Milledgeville, um, and, and hopefully they'll be here for hundreds of years more. Not only is the exterior restored in these houses, the interior is restored as well. He makes sure in those homes that he has applied for group use, that, uh, they have adequate, uh, fire suppression systems, they have adequate fire alarms, um, and those are done so that, uh, well, they're done because they're required to if they're group use. But, um, the benefits of group residence, uh, are ample. It is very appropriate for these huge homes. Mr. Sims makes sure that he has ample off-street parking. On all of his homes, there is off-street parking. The parking problems in downtown Milledgeville, uh, Mr. Sims can't solve himself, but the homes that he has done, he has alleviated the parking problems by providing off-site parking. It's regulated occupancy. The city does have the ability, if there's group use, to regulate the occupancy. The city is, with group use, has annual fire and safety inspections. If Mr. Sims is not doing what he needs to do, or if the homes are unsafe, the city determines there's a problem, the city can pull his ability to have group use. Again, like I've been saying before, having someone like Richard Sims come in and restore these houses and preserves them ensures that those, these houses can possibly be here in Milledgeville for the next hundred or two hundred years. It, i-if, if someone like him doesn't do it, these homes simply won't be there. The use as group homes, uh, for two hundred South Liberty Street is appropriate. It's one block from Georgia College. Uh, in this downtown area, there's a high student demand, and the vast majority of the homes are occupied by students in one form or another. Building needs expen, exten, extensive renovation and maintenance, and, uh, the compromise of allowing group use on this home ensures that the, the homes get preserved, and the city has some control that they don't have now. So we don't hopefully end up with losing a home to a fire from faulty wiring, or maybe not faulty wiring, but old wiring. And so, uh, with that, I will, I will close. Uh, I'm sure there will be some opposition, um, to this, but we would, uh, certainly ask the city, uh, to, uh, deny or overrule, um, the, uh, findings of planning and zoning and accept, uh, our request for group use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment?
A little decorating here. There we go. My name is John Alton. I live at two-two-one South Liberty Street, almost diagonally across from the property in discussion. First off, I will slow down a little bit so you can understand what I'm saying. Occasionally, I come up, I get carried away and talk too fast. Contrary to popular belief and past performances, I will also keep it very short. There are many, many things that were just covered that I think need some explanation. Fire on the houses in the historic district so far had been for overcrowding, and you can't put fifteen, twenty people in a house without some upgrades. And upgrades, I agree, are necessary when you do that, when each person who you put in there, be it an individual or a student, has three or four electronic devices that they're not geared for. So I, I take that off the, the record. The other is off-street parking. If you've ever driven down Liberty Street, when school's in session, there's no place to park. Now, unfortunately, on these properties that were discussed earlier, the parking is now gravel in the backyard, all gravel in some cases, in the backyard. In this property, three-fourths of it is now gravel. And I'm not, don't know whether permission was granted or not, but it is gravel. Uh, that just ruins every historic home in your district by making nothing but gravel parking in every backyard, when it used to have some sort of vegetation and growth. First off, Bill Martin, Bill and Jacqueline Martin lived in that house for over fifty years. They raised a family. They raised a family. It was a family home before someone bought it and turned it into a fraternity house illegally, and they were denied a fraternity house. And that's primarily why it changed hands. Are these houses large? Yes. Are they overly expensive? No, but they're not cheap. There are three of us in this room right now who own homes almost that big, and we know what it is to take care of the houses. It's not a matter of whether you want, it is a matter of whether you wanna make money or you wanna live in a neighborhood, a neighborhood that's not just a boarding section. I'm sorry, sometimes I get carried away with this, because I, I, I come before you every time that one of the houses, particularly in the hor, in the historic district, uh, come up for consider, uh, consideration. The houses, and they all look good on the outside. One of my problems is not the work that Mr. Sims does with these houses, because he does fix the houses. He fixes the houses for group use. When in fact, when you go inside, in many of the cases, you no longer have an historic home. You have a boarding house. Rooms have been cut down, rooms have been changed. They're no longer the nice, open places that you had before. No longer do you necessarily have dining rooms, or places to sleep. Example, the house next to me, single-family house, small house, seven people. It's not zoned that way. So again, we need to take a stand. I'm asking you to take a stand. This discussion went on several years ago about what you were going to do with the historic district. The first thing this council did was say, no more than three in a single-family home. Well, that didn't work. I'm not gonna say whether you could or could not enforce it, but it wasn't enforced. As a result, many of the homes that are going to be considered now and in the future are illegal. This one was illegal. It has been for a long time, since Mr. Martin and Jackie Martin moved out, passed away. That's the sad part about most of this. I, I do want you to consider, after you did the three unrelated rule, which I think was a good thing, if it was enforced, you said we have to do something else. We are losing our residential section within our historic district. So what we'll do is say, okay, there's a section of the city, and most of it goes around Cl, North Clark Street and Montgomery, where we will approve, without much question, we will approve group use, fraternity and sororities. But there is a section we'd like to preserve as single-family or at least a community, where we will discourage or disapprove group use, fraternities and sororities. That area is around Liberty Street, Clark, Green, and Washington. Now, I know you've made exceptions in the past, unfortunately, and I've argued against those, too. I'm hoping you do not make exceptions here, because once you get started, it's a lost cause, and I don't want you to lose your historic district, your residential section. It's the only one you got left. And I would like you to enforce the ordinance you passed. My primary thing here is to let you know, planning and zoning considered the same thing that you were considering, and they said no. That your appointed body reviewed the case and said no. I'm asking you to do the same thing. After you say, well, we all agreed on three unrelated, we all agreed to have this as a, a no-group-use area, I'm here to see if you enforce it. And I entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else here that, um, wants to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Good evening, my name's Richard Knapp. I leave, I live at five-one-seven West Hancock Street. Decide to wear the same blue shirt that Colonel Alton did. So, um, I live in that portion of town, that historic district, that has been approved for those exceptions. And I can tell you again from past experience and looking in the backyards, and just recently, again, another backyard that has just been gravelled in the last couple of months, and across the street, the old Snyder's House, that had actually concrete driveway poured without a permit, gravel parking lot also without a permit, and trees removed without a permit. And this goes unchecked and continues to go unchecked. And, uh, there's fraternities and legal sororities, whatever you wanna call them, illegal, but they're in the houses across the street, they have the wild parties. The only thing I ask the city council is to walk the street this Thursday and Friday night for once, in the historical district, all together, and then you decide how much further you wanna change your city. Because I tell you one thing, it's a nut house out there, okay? Not everybody's like that. Not all the kids are bad kids or anything. We're not talking about that, but there are a few out there, okay? And it needs, there needs to be a little bit more checks and balances, because I moved in eleven years ago, yes, and we can afford those houses. Yeah. And I don't know whether anybody can make a promise what Milledgeville's gonna look like a hundred years from now, unlike the lawyer over here. But, um, I made some changes, Colonel Alton, a couple other residents made changes, and pretty much, we've, we've pretty much decided that we can't stay here too much longer under those circumstances, because demographics have completely changed downtown. And unless you live there next to these people, you wouldn't know that, okay? If you live on the lake, you don't see this. This is downtown historic Milledgeville that we're talking about. This is what we're changing. We can't get it back. Once you put twelve people, once you put fifteen people, once you put eight people, not only are you, are, two, two residents we're talking about tonight, twelve people and eight people, that's ten dorm, double occupancy dorm rooms that Georgia College can't fill then. There's not a housing crisis, that, at least not that I'm aware of. I went around a couple of weeks ago, I took pictures of all the rental, the rentals, the for rent signs, the lease, for lease signs. There was over a dozen just in my block. I got those pictures on my camera, if anybody wants to see them, okay? So there's plenty of stuff available already. We don't need more. What we need more is just residents, people that take care of the house. We don't need twelve people in a house. Why is it twelve? Why can't it be five? Why can't it be five kids? Why can't it be six? It's all about money, okay? Let's get it straight. It's all about money. It's all about one individual making money. It's about one individual going specifically into the historic district, getting these fine houses and converting them into dorms or whatever you wanna call them, okay? Because that's what we're losing downtown Milledgeville. We are losing our identity. We already have, pretty much. But again, there is a parking problem, okay? And part of my taxes go to those kids parking on the street now, okay? We have converted streets, roads, into parking lots, okay? When you take a double-lane road or a single lane, when you take North Columbia, right there at one hundred block, and you got residents parking all on one side, and the cars have to squeeze by, that's what you've done, when you converted that. Liberty Street's like that, too. Let's not talk about, okay, I got twelve people going in there, I'll make twelve lots in the back with the gravel parking lot, that's off-street parking. Where do the visitors park at? Where do the other guests park at? Do they just got twelve vehicles? Because I know a lot of these kids have more than one vehicle. So that's what you have to consider. There's cause and effect that we are not considering every single residence that we turn into and make that exception. And this area specifically that we're talking has been protected previously by this ordinance. And what happens after a while, it's, you can call it spot zoning or whatever, it was decided a long time ago, that's not what we want. Well, now we're doing it. So that's what I want the city council to consider. And again, I invite you guys to walk the streets of your city, because if you're not walking the streets, you do not know what's going on. And I'll walk it with you. So if you want, we can get a trolley tour going, I'll pay for the trolley, and we can do it that way. So that's all I got to say, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there anyone else before I move on to the rebuttal?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sandy Garcia. I reside at two-three-one South Liberty Street with all of these other people. We're here this evening to ask you for your help, and we're here to ask you for your help for our community and for our neighborhood. We have all been students before. Do not object to students living in the historic community. I object to false claims, false statements. I object to, um, picture that's been painted that is not true. So I believe in the truth. That's what I believe in.
We don't, we're not millionaires. We can't spend millions on our homes to be restored. That's my home. I don't think it's falling down. It don't look dangerous.
We live in a very close proximity to one another. The house next door to me is eight feet away. When I step out in my backyard, I'm three feet away from guys. When I step out in my backyard, I'm three feet away from guys anywhere from the age of 18 to 20-something. That's how close I am to them. There's about, I know there's four, there may be five living there next to me that's just moving in, but I know there's already four. Madam, identify their vehicles. They're there day and night. This is three feet from me. And this is on a good day. This morning, I took another picture. My phone is up there. There's four bags.
I'm sorry, but you need to go back to the microphone, please.
There's four bags of black trash.
Just give them to him, the pictures.
I'll let you look at them as you go through them. I'll probably lose my space as I start to speak about it. I'm not like John. I'm not quick.
Mine will be a little lengthy because I believe in covering tracks. I don't really believe that there is any argument here tonight. There is no argument that these homes cannot be purchased, that these homes cannot be lived in, single-family residents, as myself, as Hoyt Johnson, as Elaine Alton, and I'll name you the rest. We've had down there in that area, Mary Jones. She moved away recently, her, in the last few years. Her home is now a sorority. Charles and Linda Moore, I believe this is the home in question tonight over on Clark Street. The single-family was not falling down. He was an attorney. She worked also here, I believe, for the college, if I'm not mistaken, in the library. Not falling down, not dangerous, certainly. The McCombs Home, beautiful home, that sits right down there across from the Barbie Shop, next to, behind the Vista Center. Definitely not in shambles or falling down. Beautiful home. The Pointer's right around the corner from me, as you turn in to go to the Centennial Center. Beautiful home they've restored there. Again, where none of us are millionaires. Hoyt Johnson, from Atlanta, came down several years ago, somewhere around nine years ago, purchased the home right on my side of the street, at Liberty Street, on the corner. Beautiful home. He also just reclaimed one of the outbuildings from one of the homes that was torn down that this gentleman was showing on the view screen. It had a beautiful outbuilding there, and he purchased it to restore it. That's restoration. That's restoring. And he has that now. My home, the Gracia Home, Johnny Elaine's home next to me, okay? I've not gone further than that. There are more. There are a few more. You did see in the paper not long ago, the number of us that are down there, and we are scattered out. I feel that, as you sit here tonight, I feel like that I just really need to lay upon you, to ask you for your help. Yes, there's a place for everything, but we're losing our rights and our place, and I feel that somebody should be there for us, and we live in this city, and we feel like that's you. We feel like that, you know, you are the one there that we would appreciate if you would help us to restore our lives, okay? I just don't feel like there's an argument to be made. It's just point-blank, it's just there in front of you. I sell real estate, and it's very unethical to sell real estate unannounced and advertised to give each and every one the equal opportunity to purchase a piece of property. That's not done. That's not done in this district. It's done under the table. They sell it, and a sign may go up after the fact says, "Sold." We never even know it was sold. Property's right beside us, right across the street from us. You never even know it was sold. That's not ethical. We don't have the opportunity for one of our relatives that want to move close to us to do so. We don't have the opportunity for friends to want to do that. We don't have the opportunity to bring professional people into any of these homes that could do that. I have had the wife of a prominent physician that's lived here a good while, that said they have kids that go to school, and they really would like to be in town, and they love the Martin Home. How about that? They can't get it. There's a right way to do everything, and there's a wrong way to do everything. And I would just appreciate the preservation of the historic district. I really would appreciate that. I work as a chairman for beautification committee for the Milledgeville Garden Club. I'm the one that plants your planters down at the Trolley Center, and I water them in the heat. I do that. Have a couple of other gals that come and help me with it, but we do that. Yes, it's very, very, very crowded down there already. And we were, just a few years ago, a number of 25 residents that live right there in that one short block area of Liberty Street. Not talking about Clark Street or Montgomery Street, right there. We are now 80. I walk, and I have a camera, and I count. There's 80. When this is approved for these other homes, it will be near 100. My number is light. I promise you, my number is light. I'm not over-exaggerating. My number is light. These two homes will bring in more. I believe he said one's going to bring in 12. Don't know about the other home that was more home. Well, how many is going to be there?
Application is eight.
Eight, okay. Well, that, he says eight for that and 12 for the other one. My, I was down this week, and...
This is the home, the Bell Home, Martin Home. I'm not as sophisticated as he is with this. I'll just have to use my phone. Behind this home right here, in this designated parking area, is already four, six, and two on the side is eight. There's already eight people dwelling in that home, Bell Home. He's asking for four more. I seriously doubt that it's going to be four more. I think it's probably going to be more like eight more. I think our number's going to go way over 800. I mean, 80 in this space. I seriously do. I don't like to stand and talk. I like to prove what I'm talking about. Okay. So, it's all nice talk to preserve Milledgeville.
We're doing that. We haven't let you down. I think we've done a real good job with it. We helped with your Vista Center, your beautification. We helped with our homes downtown. We're active citizens. So, the parking is really bad. The parking behind these homes, yes, they have gone in behind these homes, facts, and they have bulldozed and cut all trees. It is now dirt. Some are gravel. Most are dirt. So, they can park off the street, most of the ones. Some of them are lazy. They still want to park in front. So, they can, for each house, go and obtain parking permits for three per home. They do that. So, that puts three of them out there, the rest of them in the backyard. So, on my street, imagine, I have six and six, six on this side, six on that side. I don't, I don't have them, but they can get three permits, and imagine how many that is. I can't park on the street. I need to move my car. This is what I have to go through in the morning. Get up and go outside and move my car, where my husband can move his truck, so I can put my car back in the road. Because the police that comes around, the woman, traffic person, she does check, and she will give you a ticket if you're out there without one. We have to live like that. If I have guests that pull up, they have to call me and tell me they're coming, and for me to come outside and get in. Seriously. If they want to come and visit me, then I've got to work a miracle. I've got to take one of my cars and go somewhere and find a parking place and put it there so that a guest can come to my home. I have asked, could I please have a designated parking place? One parking place in front of my home that says 231 South Liberty Street, at least for an ambulance to park in? Seriously, I'm ser-, we don't ask for that much. We seriously do not ask for that much. So, parking brings, you know, it is a parking issue. Our green space has disappeared. They're not asking for park, you know, parking because they have it all behind. Behind the Bell Home is a picture that I just showed you of all these vehicles that's already there. All these homes are back there. I have more with the gravel. There's no need to show any of these pictures. No need to tell you anything that I can't prove, because I can prove these, I can prove every bit of what I'm telling you. It's all true. So, it's bringing a lot, a lot of traffic on our roads. It's bringing a lot of noise. We don't even talk about the noise anymore that it's bringing. They get on back of their trucks, they ride on the back of their trucks, they come down, they holler, they scream. You've got some pictures of some sororities that are rushing this week. It didn't start this Sunday, it started the Sunday before. 9:30 that morning, on Sunday morning, they are rushing, on Sunday morning, and they are chanting in front of my home, Sunday morning. It's gone on all week. They were out there again this Sunday morning, chanting, yelling, screaming, singing. We don't care if they're in our community. We don't care if they live there. Why not respect us? You bring a lot, a lot more, you bring a lot more anguish to them and to us trying to live among ourselves in this crowded area that we are now already. These homes will, have been restored, a lot of them, by Mr. Sims. They will not remain so with this many occupants in there. They're young kids. Promise you, they really don't care. They're going to destroy it, and he's going to have to rebuild it again, and again, and again, and again. These old homes need a lot of tender, loving care. They are not, they have not been done so under the name of preservation, and because it has not been preserved. It has been painted on the outside, some wiring has been done, plumbing. They've gone in, taken down all walls. They've made areas where this bedroom can be here, this bed can be here, this bed can be there, here, this bed can be. I don't know at, the one he just finished down on the corner of Liberty and Washington, the Ferguson Home. I gave you pictures of that old Ferguson Home. Y'all have those, the pictures that I passed down of the old Ferguson Home? There's three floors in that home. In that, in the pictures...
It says when it was built in 1818, and there's a book that was written several years ago, it's not recent. Said there were 20 rooms in that home.
Boarding house.
Boarding house. How many rooms do you say? How many girls do you think's in there now? I will go back to the podium. They're yelling and chanting too, all week. They're yelling and chanting down here. They're yelling and chanting across the street from me. They're yelling and chanting up here on the corner in Mary Jones's house. I'm not against the sororities. I really am not. By the way, there's an ordinance on the book that says, "No fraternities or sororities allowed on Liberty Street." It is, it's true. So, what I'm telling you is this, they're going to do what they want to. They're going to do exactly what they want to do. Mr. Sims is not here. He lives in Atlanta. Mr. Sims is not to take any calls concerning any of this because they're just sweet little college people. You know, we all went to college once upon a time. This is how close my house is to the other. We're close. We're all close. Eight feet. This is eight feet. I had five drunken men, three feet from my back porch. Jim Beam bottles empty in the trash. That's a trash can. I showed you. If you want to do like the up-close, you can see it. A third one left on the table, half-drink. We're, we're, we're not, we're not trying to paint a picture. We're telling you the truth of what we endure down there. And we're all still there, and we're not going anywhere, not really. Well, we do come and plead our cause with you, that we really don't need any more than what we already have. I've shown you what we have already. We really don't need any more of it. These homes can be sold and will be sold. He's not going to, Mr. Sims is not going to sell the house and leave. He is going to continue to rent it for those eight people behind there already that already saw their cars, and it's got more room for it. If he wants to go down and remodel the basement, he can put two or three more back down there. The other home around the corner, there's not three people in there, which is the Charles Moore Home. There's not three people there. There's at least seven or eight over there already, already. So, I'm going to bring to your attention one thing. It's called abiding by the law. You're here to ask for a special permission, but you're not abiding by the law already that you have not asked for. I rest my case. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Ms. Olson, okay. I guess I should have kind of set the stage or the tone before. What's the timeline on the...
We don't have a timeline.
You don't have to worry about a timeline with me. I won't be here very long. My name is Pam Beer. I live at 1724 Cedarwood Road in the city, but not in the historic district. One of the things, we're a retired military family. We were active duty when we came here. One of the reasons we decided to make Milledgeville our permanent home was you have the vibrancy of the colleges, and you have the history, not only at Central State, but the beautiful homes downtown and Memory Hill. You have this wonderful sense of history. And look at Milledgeville. It is steeped in Georgia history. It was the capital. So, that is something that sets Milledgeville apart from every other city in Georgia. And it's kind of like, and I've said this once before, it's kind of like your capital that you have. And I, if you're going to give up some of this capital, some of this uniqueness, it needs to be for something that's of a benefit to the city. You don't want to give away what makes you special for no return for yourself. Mr. Sims does build beautiful homes. He does beautiful renovations. I'm not arguing that. But are those renovations and turning them into group-use homes in the best interest of preserving the capital that Milledgeville has, that nobody else has? We have several homeowners here that refute Mr. Olson's claim that these houses are too big and too expensive to renovate. Perhaps, like Sandy said, if others had known that other properties were available for sale, you might have more families down there, more professional people, willing to renovate the homes and put the money into them. So, just think carefully if you're willing to give up what makes Milledgeville so special so that somebody can make money. You're putting more capital in Mr. Sims' pocket by allowing him to turn these properties into money-making propositions. I believe he owns the Milledgeville Manor, if I'm not mistaken, and that's a money-making proposition. All of these homes, he's not renovating for single-family use. He's not flipping them and reselling them for a profit. They're going to be continuing source of income for him. And do we want to give up what makes us special to let somebody else make money off of it? I really think you need to think about that. And Madam Mayor, before you were elected, I had the honor of sitting and meeting with you with several other residents, with several residents of the historic district, and you voiced your interest in helping to protect the historic district, and I hope you continue to honor that interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Beer.
I'm sorry. I have one more thing to inject that I forgot to inject into our last conversation. I spoke with Mr. Sims. He came down the sidewalk not too very long ago, and he asked how I was doing. I was watering. I love gardening. I was watering. Asked how I was doing. Said, "Fine. How are you?" Let me tell you about what I'm working on now, my project that I'm working on now. And he began to tell me. And he said, "You know, I'm not liked a lot in the community anymore. Might as well put facts on the table." He said, "So-and-so, so-and-so doesn't like me, and so-and-so, so-and-so don't want to talk to me, and they don't like me." And I said, "Well, Richard, why don't you think about maybe putting something back in the, to the community for the citizens here? In the Bible, it says, 'To those that have much, much is expected.'" I said, "One thing we really could use is one of these homes that you're purchasing for senior citizens. There are many senior citizens that don't qualify for going into a nursing home. They're not really of that age, but they're too old to really live on their own and care for property. And you could put, you know, five or six in one of these, and they could help one another, and that would be given back to the community, and you would at least help six or, six or seven or more of the people in the community that are elderly that can't help themselves anymore." That would be one thing to do. And another thing that you might could do in one of these homes that you're purchasing down here, possibility of why not rent to some professionals, young professionals that have just graduated college, and they're strapped right now because they're paying their college debt back. We don't have places like that for, you know, them to live. Why not one of these homes for some of them that would give back to the community? And he said, "Mm, uh-huh, yes. Goodbye. Have a nice day." Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Olson if you would come on up and give you a rebuttal, please.
Well, that's, that's a lot, and I promise that I will be very brief. Mr. Jordan will hold me to that. And really, I'd rather not do much rebuttal, but there are plainly some misinformation and falsehoods that have been spoken here. First and foremost, houses chopped up. Mr. Sims doesn't chop up houses. In fact, if you go and you look at the Tudor Mansion that's across the street from BB&amp;T, that was in a deplorable condition with twelve apartments in it. What did Mr. Sims do? You've obviously not looked. He went and converted. He went and looked, and converted that back into a single-family residence. He restored the grander. Now, the use is not single-family right now, but he undid the chopped up house that had twelve apartments in it. That's a fact. The issue's been raised over and over again, and it's been raised at planning and zoning meetings, and it's been raised before council before, and it's been raised again today. The suggestion, and until today, I'd never heard the suggestion that Mr. Sims was unethical in buying a house that was not listed with an agent.
Okay, I need everybody's comments to be directed only to counsel, please, and please remain quiet so that he can finish, thank you.
It's not unethical to buy a house. And I'll give you two examples, two prime examples, where factually what the opponents are saying is not correct. The home at two thirty West Washington Street, as I've mentioned before, in, before this council. The Baptist Church tried to give that home away, to give it away, for in excess of two years. And no one was willing to purchase it. Mr. Sims got that home, and the renovations is now starting on that. That's one, and I don't know where, i- if someone won't take something being given to it, you can say that there are cash-strapped young professionals that would love to live downtown, and I'm not saying there aren't cash-strapped young professionals that would love to live downtown. But two things, the cash-strapped young professional, I've been one before, so I have some knowledge of that. They don't have the money to go in and restore a house, even if you were given it, one of these historic homes. As, as I stated before, I know this because I just put ninety-plus thousand dollars in my office, which is a historic home that had to have historic approval, just to put the windows in. Cash-strapped young professionals, they don't have the money to do that. This house, two hundred South Liberty, is in excess of four thousand square feet. Cash-strapped young professionals couldn't pay the rent. It, it's not that any of us don't want young professionals to be living downtown, it's just the economics of it, which they are so adamantly opposed to, they just don't work. A cash-strapped young professional, even a non-cash-strapped young professional, is likely not going to have the funds that it would take to either buy one of these homes or to renovate it. For example, another example, two forty South Liberty Street, which is across the street from these homeowners here, that have, some of these homeowners that have come and spoken. It's been on the market, it's listed right now today for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's not that homes don't get put on the market, and that's why someone like Richard Sims gets to buy them. And it's not that it's unethical to buy a home. In fact, I would say, as a homeowner, if you own a home, there is no requirement that you list it. And some people choose not to list a home because they don't wanna pay a Realtor commission. I mean, there are lots of people, reasons people do those things, it is most definitely not unethical to do that. Colonel Alton is, has also raised questions about the parking in the green space. I'll take, take, ask the council to take a look at the applications. Yes, he's putting parking in the back. Yes, that parking is gravel. I, I know from having done some development in Milledgeville in the past couple of years, one of the reasons that you may choose to put a gravel parking lot as opposed to a paved parking lot is because EPA requirements require you to do specific things with runoff, and you have to offset runoff, and you have to build retention ponds, and I don't think any of us, Mr. Sims in particular, wants a retention pond in the back of any of these houses. That's why they're gravel. But the main point is, Mr. Sims does it the right way. One of the concerns all of these folks have had and have raised is parking, and that's a valid concern. Mr. Sims doesn't do anything that he doesn't provide adequate parking for his residents, and I will submit to council that in fact, any property that Mr. Sims has done, he has done nothing but alleviate the parking. Now, Mr. Sims may not be able to fix parking issues in downtown Milledgeville, but go and look, every single property Mr. Sims has done, he provides adequate parking. That is a fact. Specifically on this two hundred South Liberty Street, he is asking for twelve residents. I believe you could ask Ms. Mervin, I think this property is grandfathered in, it had an apartment originally, had six residents in the basement, I mean, six residents total. So while he is asking to increase it, it is not going from zero to twelve, it's going from six to twelve. And I'm, I'm sure there's something else I'm missing, again, I would submit to council that they really need to consider what someone like Richard Sims does for the community. He does a lot for the community. He is restoring house after house after house in the city of Milledgeville. If someone doesn't do it, and again, I give you the example of two thirty West Washington Street. That house was offered for free for two years. If someone doesn't do it, we will lose these homes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olson. Do we have any questions or comments on the council?
I do have one thing that I wanna bring up, and I, I don't, I don't mean to start anything or, or be suggestive. I would do want to question John. And I, I very much commend you for your willingness not only to serve with P&amp;Z, but all the things that you have done for this community. I have to, I have to, when we're talking about ethics, I have to, to ask you, and I, you're probably one of the few people that I would say probably never will be unethical. But I do have to ask you your thought process in voting, and your proximity to the property, and I'm not through, please.
Ms. Olson, hold on, have a seat, please, sir, thank you.
And the, and the proximity to the property that is in question, and the difference between that and the ethics complaint that was brought against our former mayor for owning property that was over a block away, I just, I, I, and the reason I bring this up, John, is that I really would like to see you stay on P&amp;Z, and I, but I would like for you to, I, I guess I'd like to know your thoughts in going forward, and how you're going to separate your personal life from voting on matters that will probably come up again before us.
Mayor, Councilman Chambers, I would tell you that that's probably a discussion for another day. Not relevant to the issue we're here about today.
I'd, I'd argue otherwise, but.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, I'm not saying it's not a question that needs to be answered, but the relevancy of it to this hearing, I mean, it's noted that Colonel Alton, serving on planning and zoning, and you got in your package that obviously he voted against, he did participate in the vote, and he, he voted against this zoning request.
Which was not surprising, and that, you know.
Right, I understand.
I expected that, but because he's been pure to his stance.
But I think the relevancy of it to this hearing should be something that's taken up at another time.
I can talk to him after the meeting.
Well, and you can talk it up with, with council, that may be an issue, but I think that needs to be talked about another day.
Anybody else on the council have a question or comment?
Colonel Alton, you're in the same position. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude, but it's not appropriate.
I apologize if, if there's been any offense or anything of that nature, I certainly do not intend that. And, and I apologize if I'm out of place in, in that the relevancy of it to this particular issue that is in front of us.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chambers, for openly apologizing, for bringing that up at this particular point in time, and thank you, Mr. Jordan, for interjecting. This concludes the presentation of the evidence in this matter. Members of council, you have heard the ordinance and the evidence presented, what's your pleasure? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the findings of the P&amp;Z board to deny the request.
Second.
Okay, it's been motion and second, clerk, call the law, please.
Mr. Mullins? Ms. Walden? Mr. Chambers?
Nay.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nay.
Right, is there any for, the discussion on the proposed amendment? We have one final public hearing, and it is ordinance O- nineteen oh six dash fifteen that will allow special use for the property located at three ten West Green Street. Has the public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance, a meeting that ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Milledgeville, Georgia, ordinance grants a special use for eight residences for the property located at three ten West Green Street.
Yeah, I recognize the planning and zoning administrator for a report to include advisory decisions of the planning and zoning.
Okay, this was denied with a two to three vote.
Is there an applicant or anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Yes, ma'am, again, Donnie Olznum with Fryer &amp; Olznum, PC. My office address is one ten South Jefferson Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Sims. I will make this very, very short, it is a very similar presentation for the property at three ten West Green Street. This is around the corner, and this would be one house down from Mr. Sims' own personal residence here in Milledgeville. This house was also built in nineteen hundred, it is a, just like before, a huge home. It is also only one block from the Georgia College campus. We believe that, and submit to council, that eight home, I mean, eight-person use is appropriate, looking at the size of the home. There's plenty of utility capacity and off-street parking. Mr. Sims has ensured that there is plenty of off-street parking. I've walked in the back, even with the off-street parking, there's plenty of green space on this property. The only houses on the street are group residence, there's a sorority-owned house, or a house that's being used as a sorority, and then Mr. Sims' own personal residence. The public benefits of allowing Mr. Sims the group use of this home is he will install new electric and fire systems in the home. The city will have the ability for an annual inspection, which they don't have now. Potentially, it increases the, the property tax base. And our belief is that maintaining this house and doing this new electrical work, ensuring there's up-to-date fire systems with alarms and suppression systems as deemed appropriate, will ensure that this historic home remains here for another hundred years in the city of Milledgeville. Again, Mr. Sims owns three ten, three twenty, and three thirty West Green Street. He would like to develop uniform landscape plans. He has own personal incentives, again, this is two houses down from his, to keep the peace and maintain the beauty. That's, that's an example of the landscaping at three thirty West Green Street. That's the kind of work Mr. Sims does, that's what he intends to do on this, this property. Thank you.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes, ma'am, you certainly can.
You said Mr. Sims' house is right beside that, does he live here, or does he live in Atlanta?
Mr. Sims, as I understand, has, has a, he does have a residence in Atlanta, and he splits time between his residence here in Milledgeville and his residence in Atlanta.
So he doesn't live at, at this resident here all the time?
No, ma'am, he has two houses. And additionally, he would have been here tonight, but he has recently had hernia surgery, and he's recovering from his surgery. That is why he's not here tonight.
Okay, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Uh-oh, I'm sorry, put your thing in the sauce.
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. Is there any about, one person who would like to speak in opposition?
Only if he's finished. And I'll be more brief, 'cause I think this follows the same category as Ms. Roman identified. And the picture of the house on West Green Street that you see behind you is a beautiful house. And it has been done outside, back to what it was before. I'm not sure what's inside, but that, that, and the question has never been, what Mr. Sims does or does not do with these homes as far as restoration is concerned. He does good work, no question. It's what the house is utilized for once he does the work. Charles and Ann Moore, and most of you who were, been in Milledgeville for a while, may be familiar with Charles and Ann Moore, lawyer. She worked at the library, a great couple, my property butts up against their backyard. I spent many hours in that house, both socially and professionally with, with Charles in many cases. And it was in great repair then, and he kept it in great repair. It's one of those large homes that unfortunately, what people will say, is hard to keep up. They're not that hard if you love them. They're not that hard if you wanna live downtown, where it's very convenient, as many of us do. Again, same category. Unfortunately, the house does have an unauthorized sorority on one side, unauthorized, illegal sorority on one side. And on the other side, it has one that was grandfathered for group use. I'm hoping that Mr. Sims has kicked out the boys who ruined the place, and starts to do some work on that house also. In the meantime, that one is zoned, single-family, I think it should stay single-family, again, for the same reasons. The city wants to maintain some residence downtown, they passed an ordinance to do that, and I would like to see you follow, that's my main purpose here, to identify some of the problems, and hopefully, if you follow the ordinance that you've already passed for this particular section of the town. And again, I will, I'll entertain any questions you may have of me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would like you to just consider the arguments I made for the previous public hearing for this one as well. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
I do have a question, Mr. Olson, the picture that you showed us of the backyard is beautiful.
That, that was Mr. Sims' backyard.
Okay, that was Mr. Sims' backyard. 'Cause what I see on the diagram here is a parking lot with eight parking spaces on it, so I do know that the backyard for this group residence will not look like Mr. Sims' backyard. If, if that were the case, 'cause I was just about to ask you, where were the residents going to park? If the backyard was going to look like the one that you showed us?
Yes, ma'am, that, that was an example of the kind of landscaping work Mr. Sims intends to do. That was his backyard two doors down. And I would ask you, since you brought up, look at the diagram, yes, there is parking for eight spaces. And that's the great thing, when Mr. Sims does one of these properties, one of the great things, that he does provide off-street parking. But there's plenty of other green space, and to suggest that it can't be landscaped like Mr. Sims' backyard would, would certainly, and, and I'm not saying you're suggesting that, but I'm, I'm just, the picture was given as an example of the type of landscape Mr. Sims envisions for these properties. But certainly, you could have a parking space, or if you just had a driveway back there for a, a single-family residence, you could still rent, landscape the rest of, of the property, like Mr. Sims has suggested.
I understand perfectly what you're saying, but unlike the other people on council, I happen to live with college students, so when I see eight parking spaces, I see sixteen or eighteen cars in my neighborhood. Any green space that's available, they're parking on it. And then I see this open space right here behi- immediately behind the house as, as an example of where they can put a keg, like they did in my neighborhood last weekend. And, and what I heard at three o'clock. And what I heard at 3:00 in the morning was, "Hey, hey, 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 hey", all the while people were drinking. And I looked out the window. They had the thing from the keg, not putting it in cups, holding it up to their mouth, and the rest of the people in the yard were yelling and screaming all the while they're drinking. So I do understand what you are going through, what the residents are going through, even though that's a two-car driveway at the home. What I'm talking about, that driveway is wide enough for two cars, but, you know, on any given night, at any given time, there's probably three or four more times that many cars there. And they have to do, when you welcome us to your neighborhood, right out Montgomery Street, it just looks like a parking lot full of cars every single night, and the trash cans are never pulled behind the houses. There is trash, will be out in the road, and, you know, so I understand what they're going through, although I appreciate the work that Mr. Sims has done. All of the homes that he remodeled are absolutely beautiful. Can't take anything away from him with that. But then I, my suggestion to him a couple of years ago when he came before us was to rent to young couples. You know, when you're remodeling these homes, take a couple of them and rent to young couples, new families, or even elderly people. That he was talking about putting a elevator, and one that had three stories would be perfect for retired couples that want to live in the downtown area and walk downtown to eat. We have several people that come up to us and talk to us about the desire to be able to do that, and we have nothing available for them in the downtown area. And I really do wish, when he comes to us sometime, that he would take that into consideration instead of always, always asking for college students, because every college student that he does place in his homes that close to Georgia College takes away from the dorm, and they're struggling with that as well. So, you know, we listen to both sides of it. I, you know, that's just my comment.
Yes, ma'am, and I understand that. In response, if I could just very briefly, I think some of what you're talking about is apples and oranges. Some things are enforcement issues with the city. I will submit to this council that if you allowed group use, A, the city has more enforcement control, most definitely has more, because they have the ability to have annual inspections. They have the ability to pull the group use, okay? If I go and buy one of these houses from Mr. Sims right now in complete compliance with the law, and I put three unrelated college students, non-college students, it doesn't matter what group I put in there. And they go out back, and they have a party, okay? They potentially violate other ordinances like noise ordinances. That's an enforcement, that's the city's police authority to enforce those kinds of things. My point is, whether it's a group residence or whether it's an individual home, those kinds of enforcement can still take place by the city government. However, with a group use, the city has the additional ability to pull the group use that they don't have if it's not group use.
I understand what you're saying, but on the other side of that, you're taxing the city's inspection department with several employees that would have to be able to go out and do that, because there's so many homes within the city. They would basically have to go out and inspect all residential areas where people live in order to be able to know and identify three unrelated people in a residence. That's really taxing the inspection department an awful lot to be, or even just these homes like such as this. You know, then you have all of this identification stuff that you have to do. I understand what you're saying, and, you know, when we did that to do the three unrelated, the question was, how are we going to enforce it? And we're still dealing with that issue. And I'm not saying that we've dropped it. We're still working on it and trying to figure it out. But at the same time, I just really wish he would reconsider all students in these neighborhoods when he purchased these houses.
Yes, ma'am, and I will submit, if you direct your attention to the special use application for 310 West Green Street, it does not call for student use. And I will tell you, I know Mr. Sims. If you could find eight seniors that wanted to rent from him, he would have zero problem doing it.
Eight seniors? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, because he's asking for group use for eight. And I would submit that that's the real issue. If I put three seniors in the house, would the seniors, again, this is a very large home, would the seniors to rent in this home, would they be able to cover the rent? And that's just the whole thing. And they want to, the opposition wants to place this as a greed, Mr. Sims' greed. That's effectively what they've said. It's not a matter of greed. It's a matter of simple economics. You've got these large homes that take an awful lot of money in order to restore and bring up to current codes. In this house, 310 West Green Street, he's made extensive exterior repairs. He has made extensive interior repairs. He's put in a new HVAC system. He's put in new electrical. He has put in new plumbing systems. All those things are expensive to do, and this was, and I know Mr. Moore was a fine attorney here in town. None of this is to say or suggest that he didn't take care of his home. However, his home was 120 years old almost. And homes that are 120 years old need new HVACs. They need new electrical work. They need new plumbing. That's just part of it. Mr. Sims has put hundreds of thousands of dollars in each of these projects, and the simple economics will not allow just three people to, I mean, if you found three people that could cover the rent, that would be able to pay for this, I am certain Mr. Sims would be glad to do it. In fact, I know he would. It's not that he necessarily wants to rent to students, but the other thing is, we are a block from the college, and who is this location most appealing to? And it is most appealing to the students. And that's just the nature of living, us living next to a college. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Before I ask for the motion, I do want to say, Mr. Griffith and I talked about some of the issues brought out about zoning and the codes, the noise, and we will address that with council at a later time. We do want to preserve the historic preservation. We want to make sure that the neighborhood is continued. I shared with someone just today that Milledgeville has been nominated as the fifth city to be visited in the nation. So that's a good rating for us, and we want to keep that rating up. So at this time, I'm going to ask council, can I get a motion on the amendment?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we overturn the ruling of the Planning and Zoning Committee and approve the request for special use.
Okay, if I don't get a second on that, it's a dead motion. So I'm going to need that to be readdressed.
I make a motion that we accept the findings of the P&amp;Z board and deny the request.
Second. Okay, it has been properly motion and second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Now, you're not going to believe this, because I tend to vote otherwise, but there's something about this house that just strikes me. Maybe it was some efforts along the years that were put into it that I don't see that were put into other houses. And I look at all that. Didn't get a chance to speak earlier, so I'm going to speak right quick before my vote. Been here all my life. Went to First Baptist Church, went up and down Liberty Street, whole lot. Looked at all those houses over the years. The things that always struck me is not necessarily how beautiful they were, it's sometimes how bad they started to look, and that's the thing that concerns me. For this house, I will vote aye.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nay.
All right, that concludes the items on the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code. That also concludes the items under Old Business. And I will move to New Business and ask the clerk to present the alcohol beverage license application for Family Corner.
This is on behalf of Shel, Shelender Rat Corconda, Coracunda, on behalf of Ram Laxman LLC, Doing Businesses Family Corner, located at 191 West Andrews Street for a beer retail package to go.
All right, you have heard the application. Is there a motion?
There's a move.
Is there any discussion on the proposed alcohol license application? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
All right, this concludes the items on the agenda. Is there any further business to discuss? There being no further business to discuss, do I hear motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Meeting adjourned.